Yeah, yeah, you're on the guest.
Charlie, just one second.
Oh, okay.
It's six oh two?
That's all right, I'll use the hard coffee.
Well, I can also put you on my, uh, on my phone as well. So just, I just gotta get going. I can have some, yeah. Sundar, can you get him on the guest network for me, please? I'll tell ya. I'm not joking.
I think he's sorry.
The, the captive portal triggered, but, uh, they, they wouldn't see it. So if you just close it and do it again, it should be okay. Thanks, buddy. Anytime. We're gonna miss some of that.
Maybe he'll come back and work with us.
There's just too many pages.
Exactly. I like the bottom, and then you mark them all up.
In the sports from here.
Sometimes that, that guest network, it just needs to trigger the, the captive portal. Yeah, the captive portal got stuck on this. Oh, I think you're in.
Oh, right.
Can you check it now?
We can go.
Are you guys exchanging phone numbers? I got a hotspot here, I can put him on it.
Max, that's not working, I'm going hard talking, I gotta put you here.
There you are.
Thank you. All right, as I said, the meeting is in order. Let's stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Parsons, can we have any folks on the hotline?
We did not a minute ago, I would confirm.
Are there any people here in person who would like to speak? Offer public input. Okay. There are none, and we're gonna move on, leave public input open. So we do have a recognition this evening. We have the Future Business Leaders of America folks. And they achieved quite an accomplishment. They became a, and correct me if I'm wrong, a gold champion chapter?
Yes.
Awesome. And I'd like to read the names of all of them. We have three in person tonight, but I would like to just say for the record, it was Jake Ambrose, Landon Ambrose, Connor Brunt, Liam Crivvy, Karen, Karen Donnelly, Hayden Majors, Aaron Smith, Tommy Rioti?
Brioty.
Right.
Brioty, thank you. Finn McIntish, Chris Boxankey?
Boxankey.
Boxankey, thank you. Aiden Brunel, Brunel, Brunel?
Brunel.
Wyatt Berman, Tyler Coleman, Alec Pizzuti, Aiden Price, Thea Wright, Rogan Donnelly, Meredith Gurkin, who's here, Darren Hayward, Jacob Hayward, Jack Joyce, Sundar Mills, who just saved the day for Mark, Tegel Ort, Logan Smith, and Ruby Walker, who is also here. So with that, Meredith and Sundar and Ruby, if you would come up, we would like to present you with a certificate of achievement.
This is Meredith.
Jack, Meredith, that's you. Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
Ruby, congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
And then this guy, Sundar Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Well done, Sundar.
Congratulations. Might you share with us what it takes to be a gold champion?
Yeah, we had a lot of, there's different things that you can do to get different points in Future Business Leaders of America. So it was strategic planning on where we want to spend our time getting points, but also on what resources we had to like complete different things. So we did different, we helped with different, um, national like officer projects, which we had a clothing drive, we did like a newsletter thing, I think. And also it was just when we went to the, um, spring, um, competition, we had the P and R.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you all, and thank you to Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan is the advisor who does an amazing amount of work and really is very dedicated and brings quite a lot of spirit to it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I must mention, even though it's not on the agenda, that Mary and I were fortunate enough to be able to go to the Eddie's Awards on Saturday. And, shoot, we should have gotten the pictures so people could have seen. But, um, it was a great event. Erica came as well, she was there. Just about, most of the Sandwich faculty were there. It was, uh, it was really good and it was nice to see. And I ran into the guy who we met with who did our, um...
Oh, the Newcastle?
No, no, um, the high school accreditation.
Oh, 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 wait.
Uh, the guy from Bedford?
Yep.
And, cause their teacher was Teacher of the Year. They had a teacher that was Teacher of the Year. And he just reiterated again to me unsolicited what a great school we have. I just wanted to throw that out. Caleb, I'm gonna stop talking and let you talk. So please give us an update.
So today, we hosted the sixth grade students from SES and ILES. Uh, they were able to meet teachers and staff and get a tour of the building. So this was kinda like their move up day. And they even got a chance to check out the cafeteria. Uh, we're really excited to welcome these students into our building for their upcoming seventh grade year. Graduation will be on June fourteenth at ten AM. Uh, due to the weather, uh, we'll be moving indoors to the gym. Uh, there will be overflow seating provided in the auditorium. And the ceremony will be livestreamed throughout the room. Uh, seniors enjoyed an incredible night in Boston last night for their senior trip. Uh, the day included visiting the Boston Aquarium, a ride up to the Prudential Building, shopping, and a lot of eating at Faneuil Hall. They also attended a Red Sox game at Fenway. Congratulations to the graduating classes of twenty twenty five. And then the Laker Bots will be hosting a summer camp this summer for upcoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And this program hopes to, uh, teach upcoming Laker Bots, up to twenty kids, using, uh, a grant from First Robotics to make this happen.
Nice, well, existing high school robotics team members participated in that?
So the current Laker Bot team members will like mentor the younger students, yes.
Great, awesome. Thank you, Kale. Next up, uh, Mrs. Moriarty and Mrs. Papalardo are gonna give us a little highlight of artificial intelligence in the classroom.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Papalardo before we have some guests here this evening to share how they're using artificial intelligence in the classroom.
We are very excited. Um, so large language models that, um, I'm sure everyone has heard of, Chat GPT, Gemini, they're kind of ubiquitous now in our, in our practices. And educational landscape is no different. There are all kinds of different tools popping up all the time, um, from brisk to diffit to all kinds of interesting names that, um, are artificially intelligent, kind of, um, enabled tools to support teaching and learning. And these resources can be anything from, um, thought partners to, um, you know, uh, uh, tools to use to kind of differentiate experiences. So we're really excited, we have three teachers here tonight to demonstrate how they have used AI to enhance their own teaching and learning practices. Um, I think before I turn it over to them, uh, I think it's important to also know that behind the scenes, uh, we do definitely have some best practice, um, guidelines that we employ when we're accessing these kinds of tools. So, uh, for example, not entering any student personalized identifiable information. Um, and obviously having our teachers be the ones who are reviewing content that's generated and being always the decision makers behind the scenes. Um, so with that said, I'm super excited to hand it over to our team from the middle high school tonight. I believe Mr. McLeod is gonna start us off. And, um, I think we are ready for you, Mr. McLeod. Yes, thank you so much.
Your teacher taken away.
Yes, yes.
So Mrs. LaRue and myself, um, are both social studies teachers at the high school. Um, and so we kind of work together, um, and we've been using Chat GPT, um, pretty regularly in the classes that we've been, um, looking at. I have three things that I wanted to share with you in terms of what I do, and then this LaRue will, will continue on and talk about some of the things that she does. So the first thing is, um, clarity of directions. Um, a lot of the time, I have a lot known in, on in my head, and that might not make sense to everybody. So I often take, um, my assignments, like this one here, and run it through Chat GPT and ask, can you make sure that these directions are clear, concise, and that my students can understand? And so when I feed this into Chat GPT, it gives me a, what works well? Here's what you're doing, um, that, that is clear. Um, and then it also, uh, gives me some, some things that I could change. Um, and that's not just wording. It also, as you can see, um, in that first red circle there, it also bolds things that are important for students, uh, to take a look at, to make sure that they have that information in, um, their projects. Um, it also takes things, uh, that second circle down there, I had listed up in my, um, original piece at the top where it now says your task, but it actually puts that in those step-by-steps instruct, instructions for me, uh, so that students, when they get to that step, know, hey, this is what I can do for my project. The second thing that I wanted to... Oh, sorry, there's another more thing here. Um, it also gives me some options to, you know, this might be helpful going forward. And so this one, um, which is something that Mrs. LaRue and I have used is, it says, uh, include a sample of what you're looking for from student information. And so we've both worked with, uh, Chat GPT to help us, you know, come up with a sample, um, that students can read and, and understand kind of what they're doing, um, what they should be aiming for. The next thing, um, is providing outlines and accommodations for students with IEPs and 504s. And so, um, this is an example of one of the slides that I'll have students fill out for a project. And there's a lot that goes into those two boxes there that some students might have, um, trouble kind of processing. And so Chat GPT has helped me to chunk these things out. This is, um, an actual, uh, piece of student work, um, that it chunked out the information that they needed from that slide into pieces, so they can put the information that they needed into each of those boxes. And then they could take some of that information to input it into the actual project itself, um, so that they can organize their thoughts a little bit more. Um, so those three things that are circled there are all things that needed to be in this, um, slide back here. And then the last thing, um, is kind of something that I'm pretty excited about. I like to, uh, engage students through what I call gamification. Um, a lot of the times, taking material, um, to meet them in a place where they're going to be maybe more excited, um, to, to kind of engage with what we're giving them. And so using my information, my study guides, so it's all of my information, um, and Mrs. LaRue and myself have done this. We fed it our study guides with all that information and said, can you make a Jeopardy board for us that actually works? And as a teacher who has made Jeopardy boards on slides in the past, it takes a long time. So this happened in minutes, and it was very, very easy to go through, um, to make sure that it was, it was all good and, um, represented the information that I fed it. Um, and I even came up with those, um, categories at the top, so you can actually work with it a lot. The last thing is kind of more of a, of a passion project that I've been working on. I've been working on actually creating a review game for my AP US History students. Um, for when we get to test time, there's a lot of information that they have to go through, a lot of content. And so Chat GPT has been helping me make a game. This is a, an image that Chat GPT has actually made for my game. And I just had a short little recording of kind of a little bit of what, um, it has done for me so far. Mark, I don't know what, I need to hit something quick and bring it for me, thank you. It helps me to come up with this little intro, people can play the navigation. Page with it, and then, uh, I have this... Basic multiple choice questions with me. Just an example, it keeps track of their score and things like that. And Chat GPT has helped me to do that.
It's like Oregon Trail.
Yep. That's what I was aiming for. And now I will, uh, pass it on to Mrs. LaRue here. Yep.
Um, so like Mr. McLeod said, we do use it to provide student work samples. And, um, I work mostly with ninth graders this year, and a lot of our competencies in American state government, world history, are about looking at a variety of sources, sources of different types, representing different perspectives. And so the students are using AI. One kid said he uses it to get sport stats, cause it's quicker than Google. So I, I surveyed them to find out how they're utilizing it. And so both within the academic sphere and in their personal lives, I wanna guide them through how it can be a tool and, um, how to use it ethically and appropriately in the classroom when it is allowed. And so for this, um, in world history, we do a lot of student-led learning, so I don't always have a former student sample as an exemplar to use. So this class chose to study Chad, and they wrote all their own research questions. And so I think the example there is Sudan. I followed, I put the paragraph structure that we were working on, once they completed all their research, into Chat GPT and used Sudan as, um, a similar country with some of the similar issues, so they could really look at what, um, their product might be when they turned all that research into paragraphs. And then we took it a little bit further and analyzed this. So I asked them kind of, what do you think of this? And I'm always really transparent if I'm using Chat GPT material in the classroom, um, because one of the things I want is for them to get used to seeing how it produces this type of information. For me, it seems obvious sometimes when, um, when it is Chat GPT written, it does have its own kind of tone and style. And so as they're navigating information in the world, I think it'd be great for them to kind of pick up on cues to say, huh, I wonder, this might be AI-produced. And that's okay, but then what do I do with that, um, inkling that this might be AI, not produced by a specific author? So this gave us some great work samples. Uh, when it's content where I do have a student exemplar, we sometimes compare it, the Chat GPT version to what a student wrote, so they can also see kind of the strengths and limitations. Um, and then, we were studying the Haitian Revolution. And the students did all sorts of research with primary and secondary sources, but there's not a lot of information out there at a ninth grade level on modern-day French perspectives of the Haitian Revolution. There's a lot of scholarly academic articles, um, but a lot that students would need to sift through, not really appropriate for how we were using it. So I asked students, um, why don't we use Chat GPT? What do you think of that? Yes, cause guiding them through that process, I think, is also kind of, um, taking this, uh, thing they hear about and have been told, don't use, you know, your academic integrity violation, can't use it in the classroom, and bringing it in, in an appropriate way. And so, um, we asked Chat GPT to give us three modern-day perspectives of the Haitian Revolution, a French and American and a Haitian. And this is what it produced. So it was short, students said it was concise, easy to read. Um, and, and I compared them to like a scholarly article I found. Yes, we would much prefer that. Um, and so what we did was they analyzed those three different perspectives. Um, and then the reflection was to ask, I think, I can't read from here, do the summaries generated by Chat GPT corroborate the primary and secondary sources we have examined? So they had already done all the research, they could have easily, um, for the Haitian and American perspectives, probably come up with that on their own by pulling all that evidence together. But their task was now to say, is what Chat GPT provided us doesn't seem accurate? Um, another part of it was to show that you can ask AI to give you a bias. So really showing that, um, that misconception that a lot of students have that because a computer did it, it's non-bias and it's factual and it's all right. Even though we work really hard to reiterate that that is not the case, this really highlights how it will tell you what you want it to tell you. Um, and for the first two, the American and the Haitian perspectives, they found that all the evidence they had collected after about two weeks of research supported Chat GPT's narrative. Um, and then we decided that the French one, we really didn't have enough research. So then they went and found actual, uh, article in NPR, an article in a French newspaper, and then decided if they thought that the Chat GPT narrative fit what their evidence showed them. So it's really just using it as a tool, um, in the classroom as one of the sources that they're gonna interact with throughout their studies. And always reiterating that, we're doing this as a class, I'm doing this on the board, you are not doing this, because that's not the point of an assignment, maybe to write an essay, pulling together your research. That's, I wanna see your perspective, I wanna see what you think about these events. But I do think it's important to show them this other source of information and help them see how they can navigate it in a useful and appropriate way when explicitly allowed to do so.
Mrs. Campbell teaches English at the Mill High.
Thank you. Hi. I am out there. Okay. All right, so, um, one of the tools that I use, sorry, I should have preface with that, well, these guys kind of did a focus on Chat GPT. I, um, focused mine on Magic School, which is a tool that Mrs. Papalardo had introduced to us and encouraged us to try out, uh, with all of the parameters. And Magic School is one that is really developed specifically for educators and actually students as well. I haven't played with the student end as well. Uh, but I, I have used it quite a bit this spring, I was playing around with it a lot. Um, so one of the ways I use it was as a thought partner. I teach a film critique class, which is an English elective. It's the same competencies as our other English classes, but it's taught through the lens of film rather than books. It's a really great class, it's awesome for teaching analysis, especially for our more visual learners. So of course you can say, how is this challenge that we have filmed? But we still want these kids to be deeply analyzing and writing, right? Not just watching movies. So, um, I, and obviously I think about this very much. So one unit they do is cinematography. And so they'll watch two movies for cinematography. They watch Gladiator and they watch The Eternal Sunshine of the Spotless Mind. Um, formative activities that we did leading into them watching these movies was that I give them an introduction, they get notes, they take the notes. Um, and then when they view the two films, they'll actually use the cinematography bingo sheet that I have, where they actually can just check off any of the elements that they notice as we're viewing the movies. And then we always get together and discuss them afterwards. And what I really found was, they're doing a great job of understanding the vocabulary, actually analyzing the movie and picking out the elements. They can spot them really well, they're doing a great job with that. What I was having trouble with was moving them to this next step, where they say, I can see how these elements are being used in film, but how do they tell us this bigger story of the narrative, of the character's journey? English stuff, right? So, um, what I asked GPT, Chat GPT, no, I'm sorry, Magic AI to do is to kind of work with me to help me get to this next step. My thought bubble is, how can I move my students from analysis to synthesis? How can they really then look at the whole movie and say, how would these elements told a story visually and not just with using words? Um, and so just to show you guys, I use Chat GPT. This is just a screenshot of the platform. Um, and when you go in, there's many options, and I chose the academic content, which is kind of a general one. I can put in the grade level, I can put in the content type, which you can see I put discussions, I only wanted it to be about a page length. Um, and then it asks you to put in the topic standards and objectives. So I really take all of my notes that the kids have been given, and I put it in there, right? And so I say, how do we put all of these pieces together so that they can ultimately answer these essential questions, right? And then I also asked it at the bottom, it's, it's flexible where it says, do you wanna include anything else? And of course I do. So, um, additional criteria, I actually took all of those vocabulary words from the bingo sheet and I put them right in there. And I said, please ask students to reference the bingo sheet, okay? And it's, it's pretty cool how you can say, tell them they have to use this. And it'll listen. Um, and so I would say my results with this, with this experiment for having it as a thought partner, is that, um, the questions developed with the aid of Magic AI integrated all the elements required to help students practice univocabulary, discuss their findings, and ultimately synthesize, put it all together. Um, the questions recommended specific examples from the films from support. It was, you know, for instance, it might say in Gladiator, go to the opening scene with the battle in Germania. And I have to say, I was very impressed with the scenes that they picked out. They were excellent scenes for the kind of analysis I was looking for. Now, having said that, it also tried to be very helpful and said, you can find that at this point in the film. And it gives you a timestamp, totally wrong, totally wrong. So again, you know, you, you can't just print these out and say, here you go, kids. There's, um, I keep saying the teacher filter, you have to put it through the teacher filter. And this definitely felt like I was working with a colleague. I'm the only one that teaches this class. So it was nice to be able to throw ideas out. Um, and Magic AI did have a few minor errors to be corrected, small adjustments. Um, but overall, it really pinpointed, kind of put together, I felt like I had all of these different elements, and my brain was just having trouble putting them all together in a succinct way. And it really helped me. Now, having said that, lots of trial and error. I went back and revised my prompt many times, um, you know, and then I ultimately would ask it to dig a little deeper, say, can you be more specific? And it really did deliver. But again, I have to go through them with a fine-tooth comb and make sure everything that it's presented is what I'm asking it for. Um, I've tried this a little bit with books, of course, and I find it, it's not worth it. It will often give you, um, you know, if you wanted to try something, for example, say, give me a quiz on chapter three of this book. I very often find that it's asking questions from chapter seven, uh, page numbers. So, but I mean, that's how it is, right? I'm a trained professional, I read the book. And so these are just tools to help my students learn more. Um, and so really, I did think ultimately, it did what I asked. It came up with a formative activity, and I really felt like it helped the kids move from just, oh, I can see where they're using lighting here to highlight a character, to be like, what are they telling us about this character? And this character's role in this whole story? Um, so trial and error is essential, and the final step is always that teacher filter, I would say. Um, if anybody wants to see the questions, that, those are my copies. But again, I would say down there, the questions definitely have been proofread by me. Um, and I will say, one thing that it was cool that I didn't ask it to do was it added an extra question where it said, you might ask students to consider this. And what I did is, I moved that on to our higher level achievement. So, um, beyond competency and advanced competency, and it was great. I have to give Magic AI that one, that was a good one. Um, so it was very fruitful for that. Um, and then just my last example is Magic AI for targeted practice. So high... So high school English language arts students can expect a vocab quiz most weeks. Um, we have a pretty strong language program and vocabulary is heavily rooted in that. Uh, many students show success with additional targeted practices. So for instance, we, I have my own way that I introduce vocabulary and have students work with it formatively throughout the week. But students who have trouble with language acquisitions very often need more targeted practice with that. They need more than what I can give them just in class time. Um, and they very often ask for games. Um, now, so as Mr. McLeod was saying, to make these games meaningful and pertinent to the kids, they, it really does take a lot of time, right? It's higher order thinking. Um, but I want to be able to provide that for my kids. So what I focused on this year is I really wanted to, instead of trying to have a Kahoot of their vocab right before we took the vocab quiz, I wanted to give it to them at the beginning of the week and say, this is for you to practice anytime you can. Um, and what I, I'll show you on the next slide how I do it. But what I found is that students who independently use these tools were less likely to have to reassess their vocabulary exams. And that's anecdotal, again, intended to be a research project, but I did notice I was having less students reassess their exam. Um, and so, and the way it really works for for that, again, with the Magic School model, is that I give it the grade level number of questions and you can see at the top. It let me pick this time. I wanted to do multiple choice quiz, but my goal is that I'm moving these on to a game for the kids to practice, right? So um, and I said, please create two questions for each of the Greek roots listed below. Create questions that assess students' understanding of each root's definition, use in a sentence and spelling. And then I give them all the words. Um, and this is my year-long eleventh grade class and we have been studying Greek roots. And that especially has been a little bit more difficult for them. You know, it's just not quite as tangible. Um, and so when I put that in, you'll see right there on the left is, I just took a screenshot up just to show you, this is what it came up with. It says, here's an assessment using all of these words. And you can see for each question, it did give me four choices. And so then what I was able to do was go through all those questions, pick the ones I want, make some modifications. I have found it doesn't like to create questions that ask about spelling. I don't know why. It's just, and maybe again, it's how I'm asking it. You know, I'm, could readdress how I'm doing it in the prompt, but that's something I have to go back in. But it's a lot easier to go back in and add that than create, you know, twenty-five questions with multiple choice code. So it generates these. I decide which ones are um, going to help my students get to their understanding and then I input them into this Kahoot game. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, Kahoot. Um, it's a, it's just an online quiz tool and the kids can play together and they get very excited about it. Um, you know, somehow if you, I mean, just look at it, right? Like, which one would you rather interact with? Um, and again, you know, I really find that they get excited about it and a lot of them are very visual again. So with Kahoot, I can, I pick the pictures and I put in pictures that I think can help them make a little bit more of a mind-brain connection and, you know. That's, that's how I use that. Um, so just to wrap up for all of us, um, we use AI as a teaching assistant and tool, not at all as a replacement for thinking or creation of new materials. Um, it helps teachers to individualize learning for students of different learning styles and background. That is one other thing I've been using it for, to recreate reassessments or ask it to keep in mind student challenges. Um, but all the information really, when I use it, comes from me, just as my colleagues were saying. I don't ask it to create a unit for me. I've done all that work. I've read all the books, I've created the vocab list. I'm looking for opportunity to really take student learning to the next step. And I will say, I played around with it a lot this spring. I was pretty doubtful at first, but I felt like I needed to give it a shot, right? Um, it's unavoidable, it's technology. Um, and it's not one hundred percent all the time, but I found it to be useful. Um, it helps us, you know, we make sure that we don't, I I've never had any clause to enter personal student information. Um, it can be used as a tool to jumpstart creativity. It does not replace human thinking. Um, and the goal for using AI is to help guide and inform our, or improve our craft, not to provide shortcuts in our professional work, but honestly, I I take it to the next level for the kids. I've I've been impressed with how it's helped my practice.
That's great.
Thank you. Erica, do you have anything to wrap up or?
I just thank you for your uh engagement tonight. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for any of our folks.
Outside, I think this is really for for you guys. Um, and and maybe they're two takes on the same question. So one, how does the, your use of AI affect your grading rubric? And two, what affects it? And have you noticed with regard to like imaginative solutions, uh, different approaches to assignments? The reason I ask that is when you say, hey, like, for clarification on my my assignment, that is my thing. It's like, okay, you have four simple, all of a sudden it kind of like, well, kind of takes the judgment out of me to students. You're like, have I adequately supported my argument or? No, I put four pieces of information made up therefore, I'm good. So I guess maybe there's the two different takes on the same same kind of question.
I have never used it, well, I once looked to see what a rubric would look like and I did not like it. And it was so far off of what I would have created that I I didn't feel it was worth my time to try to navigate it because we've worked as a department to create competency-based rubrics that are aligned with our spoken sequence. And so that I never used in terms of creating.
That's not asking if you use it to create a grading rubric, but the use that you have put AI to, how has that affected your grading rubric?
Sure.
I, I think, you know, we, both of us have have study guides or assignments and things like that. I think we've used what we have and fed it into chat GPT to double check it for the clarity of directions or to to make sure we're hitting specific parts of um, you know, our competencies, our standards and things like that. So I think, I think it's kind of um, helped us to make sure that we're reaching the different skills um, that we want the students to have um, and for them to be able to look at different perspectives or to engage with other materials as we're continuing forward into the future. And AI is going to just continue to grow. Uh, does that answer?
No, but I think it's because I'm not answering the question.
So I know, I know you like talked about like the four, like four specific examples. That was something that you use. I think it helps like from student perspective, feel the baseline of what like does need to be there. But you can always like continue to go past that or add more. It's not do this and then I'm done. Like, it does, it sets like a bar kind of. So like, you know that you have things that you need, but you can still push it further, I think.
I think um, when it comes to those rubrics, it's it's so important. We showed you our, I showed you my directions or how we've done things um, through, you know, directions or examples. But when you have the rubric to look at as well as the instructions, the rubric really helps students to say, okay, this is what the instructions say, this is what I've been actually being creative on the rubric. So maybe it's just not enough context in that you didn't see the rubric with the assignments that we used. But um, they kind of work together to to make sure that the students fully understand what they're being assessed on and what they're what praise they're getting.
Okay. And a a much easier question, I think it's an easier, but what what if any differences have you noticed between different platforms? I'm assuming you try, when we talk about Magic, sorry, the one that we talked about vice chat GPT, vice all the other stuff that's out there. How do you allow that, that's specifically, it's not a verification of it?
I found Magic School because one day Mrs. Parcolato presented tools to us and it was the first one I tried. And so I just, I just kind of decided, um, I'm so new at this game that I wanted to play around with that one. And then I I played around with risk, but it's it's been a while. I don't think I got as devoted to trying to see what I could get out of it as I did with Magic School. But I also use chat GPT. I would say one of the differences is Magic School, as I said, is geared towards educators. Um, but chat GPT, you can even say, I would say like, this is for an eleventh and twelfth film class. And it does seem to take that into account. Um, I still, yeah, I don't know. I I think that probably I would just say, if I'm using it for formatically something that I might use in class, Magic School might be better, but um, it's hard to say because I I I feel like I've never used it and then not had to edit it. Do you know what I mean? Um, so I I actually, between the two, I think they, I don't really have a preference of one over the other.
I used, I've just used chat GPT for the way I've been using in the classroom because I've asked the kids kind of where are they going to get the information? And with the way I've been using it in terms of evaluating it as a source, identifying it as a source, because it is something that people are using to gather information about the world. I wanted to use that, um, kind of matching up with where they're at right now. I also, um, a year ago, would have never believed that I would be here finding out this because I philosophically was extremely against AI. But then in terms of its existence and my role as a teacher versus just my personal beliefs about everything. And now I've I've really seen how it can be a tool and we're being responsive to where our students are at and what they're going to be exposed to and how they're navigating the world. So for me, I've done that. I think if if they get a balance between all all of us, and if they need to look at other sources, but I haven't used it in this way.
Mark?
Well, first off, I wanted to just thank you all because I learned more in the last thirty minutes than my entire lifetime. I had mentioned to Mary uh, three weeks ago that I saw a newspaper article in Bloomberg News and it was talking about the Austin, Texas school system, I think it's Austin Independent School, and how they had outperformed not only most of everybody else in the state, but in the nation, of course. It didn't get into the weeds as to why and how they were doing it. And again, thank you because you filled some of that in. But I'm a seventy-five-year-old Luddite. How do I continue to climb this curve? That the bad vocabulary in and of itself is new to us. Uh, so we're going to need your help.
Can we find ways to partner some nurses? Right?
Absolutely.
The district did provide the opportunity through SNHU and the program that a number of us took last summer online and that was more information than I needed. It was all about how open source AI versus this type. And I I didn't understand the technology side of it, but I got a lot out of that. So it was a great opportunity the district provided us to get some some really in-depth professional development on just how it works so that we understand it as a tool.
Jim, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I said, well, two or three things, comments, questions. But one, same with Mark, I appreciate that you guys are all using that. And I think I heard from everybody saying like, you're not using it to replace your lesson plans. You're using it to enhance what you're doing. And I use it all the time in my work like daily, so I appreciate that. I think it's time management, it's awesome. Um, I was going to ask just around our, like, I use Copilot at work, which is a Microsoft. I use chat GTP at her Magic School, you know, there's Grok, there's all the different ones. Like, as a district, should we look at one enterprise, right? So that was one question.
I think we will get to that point. We kind of, it's been an exploration at this point. And we've really been primarily using free options at the moment. Um, but um, we probably will need to narrow down and buy an option that has more advanced features.
Yeah, yeah, because I think Christina was talking about, or um, like about the prompts. So depending on whoever showed the example of what prompts you put in there, you might get a different solution. So if we're using a lot of different software around that, it could be different. Um, so that that was just kind of my overall comments, but I appreciate it. And I think it's a tool well-used for productivity and fully support us trying to move as a district into something.
And the Department of Education has also provided a, the state of New Hampshire, free access to uh, something called Khan Mio, which is um, kind of an extension of Khan Academy. So it's AI-enhanced experience. And there are just so many different courses that are available on there and very similar to some of the tools that you saw tonight. Um, have very similar kind of teaching assistant tools embedded in in that platform as well. That's for fifth students. It does also have a student-facing platform. Um, students are um, for fifth through twelfth grade. And um, so that's another uh, nice platform that we do have access to.
And we've been piloting that this year.
We did some training for that earlier this year for our staff.
I just want to say, as a career history teacher, you know, the time you could spend, remember spending days trying to create a crossword puzzle or something. Now you can, I can make my own. I'm most impressed with, have you noticed the difference in terms of just kids who are visual learners? And has their achievement gone up? Have they, have you used it enough to track how those kids who, you know, just don't learn as well through the written word, um, are performing in your classes?
I I don't think I've been using it for for long enough to kind of track, you know, long-term. But I think, I think all of us have seen some in, some improvement in that achievement in in one way or another. Um, either reviewing for vocab quizzes or for um, quiz, uh, the quiz that that we use Jeopardy for. Um, but I I think if.
And and student engagement, I mean, I I just like, ah, what a way to explain.
Most of it, I just, I'll piggyback off that. Most of it is what you guys are using it more for behind-the-scenes engaging lesson planning, not student facing. Like, are the students interacting with chat GPT?
No, but they can't do that at this point. Um, and so we're, if they're, if we're using chat GPT with them live, we're facilitating that. That's behind scenes.
Right, and I.
That is some of the brave new world we have to figure out. And how do we balance that with?
It's it's interesting to see, when I first started using it in the classroom, I pulled it up on on the board and the kids were like, Mr. McLeod, what are you doing there? Guys, we can use it for good, we'll figure it out. Uh, and you know, that's kind of what I've modeled it after is, you know, this is something that's there. We have to learn how to use it responsibly.
Yes.
Um, and it's, you know, in terms of the prompts, I I think of it as, you know, teaching students how to Google something and get good information rather than just typing in the entire question. It's very much similar to, how do I write a a good prompt that's going to get what I want?
Yeah, yeah, and the reality is when they, once they leave public school anyways, they're going to use it immediately. So they're kind of around being smart about using it now.
Right.
Caleb, are they using it at home?
I I use chat GPT not for like school assignments necessarily, but like for robotics and stuff and Copilot as well.
Yeah.
But like, it's definitely application-based. Like, if I was doing something for robotics and I was looking for a more creative picture, I might go to Copilot over chat GPT based on like what it does and how it's like thinking about the the prompt and the solution.
We even like thinking of Copilot in here via its recording. If you're using Copilot right now, it'll give you like a one-page outline of this entire meeting when you're done with it and we'd be done.
Among us has never used AI. Okay, me too. Well, we would be happy if you would like. People would suddenly come out like, why? We can set up a session for you. I don't want to.
This this meeting is is being recorded, right? And the video is is being livestreamed and the AI is making a transcript.
So yeah.
Yeah, that is happening. So after we end this meeting, uh, the people who are on the meeting that are like moderators, myself and Sarah Briggs, will receive a transcript. And.
What's been hard is it doesn't distinguish who said what, like, that's not happening. So for her, we had hoped it was going to be more.
For everyone in the room, we're all using the same microphone. So when it transcribes a Google Meet, it will tell when our guests speak because it knows it's coming from a different microphone. Here, we're all using the same microphone, so it doesn't. So right now, Mrs. Moriarty and I, our our speech will be in one bubble.
Yeah, that's a good point because I use Teams all the time, so just tell us everybody.
Much, much easier.
Anything else?
I have one more thing.
This subject could go on for the next three hours.
I have this to show. Well, that's great.
Nice. That's great.
Thank you, Marty.
I would just like to thank the teachers for taking more on and for being here this evening. And um, you're so engaging and we know that, you know, our students are very, very fortunate to have you. So thank you for taking additional time to be here tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And and to your comment, Ms. LaRue, about, um, you know, you.
And to your comment, Ms. Larue, about, um, you know, you were kind of scared at first.
I still.
Don't forget, don't forget when the first automobile came out, people were terrified. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Brave new world. We have some minutes. April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, school board meeting minutes.
Page, page is fifty-six through fifty-eight.
I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here?
This is my birthday.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes is presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or none?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Yeah, I want to speak to you, ten, eleven.
So Ed and Shabon abstained.
And Nancy.
And Nancy.
I think that happened last time we were here.
Uh, the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular school board meeting.
Page is fifty-nine through seventy-two.
Does anyone entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shabon. Is there a second?
I was seconded by Nancy.
Any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And to approve?
I abstained.
Yeah.
Jim and Duncan abstained from that one. Then we have the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, non-public school board meeting minutes.
Seventy-three through seventy-five.
Hear a motion to approve?
Abstained.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstained.
Opposed? Shabon abstained. And then last but not least, the May twenty-eighth, non-public.
Seventy-six through seventy-eight.
That motion is accepted.
Thank you, Jim. Seconded by Nancy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All good. General operating expenses. Mrs. Holliday?
Those are pages seventy-nine to eighty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Holliday. Manifest three zero two six, correspond page seventy-nine, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Seeing no questions. Anybody want to make a motion to approve? Leaned by Nancy, seconded by Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have the enrollment report.
So that's page eighty-two. And just to give you a sense, in September, we had, um, so from September to now, we are down eight students. I think that's just to give you a sense of the overall change in the year. Pre-K to six was increased by seven students. Seven through twelve decreased by fifteen.
Any questions on that?
I don't know why.
Seven through twelve decrease by?
Fifteen students and pre-K to six increased by seven over the life from September to, to June.
Do we have a process of asking questions?
We do, we do. Yeah, we do kind of an exit. We try to keep that.
And no, some.
Just like feedback on it from that?
Nope.
No pattern.
No pattern that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Moriarty, if you'd like to keep rolling with the staffing.
Sure. So staffing update is pages eighty-three to eighty-four. You know, probably bottom length of the year is we basically stayed pretty flat. Where we started is where we kind of ended in terms of hiring, but really it's the focus for next year. So if you go to page eighty-four, we have six par educator positions still open for next year that we are hoping to fill. We have three teaching positions, one, uh, sixth grade, uh, year-long. We book accents, uh, full-time substitute. As well as the speech language pathologist, as well as a special education teacher at the elementary level. We did get an application in today that I'm hopeful, um, we'll be able to take a look at for special education. So those are three positions that we do not have filled, um, from the teaching side. And then, um, from the administrative side, we're just pending, um, finalization for the dean of students and operations that I understand might take place June twenty-third in the other district. And, um, we still have four custodial positions.
Questions regarding staffing? Hearing none. Your youth exchange student, we already voted on.
Uh, no, you said you would do that in public because I do believe we have dean online.
We do, he's here. Yeah, I think we've. I think you can hear us. He's smiling.
Is that Dean?
Yes.
It is Dean.
Hi, Dean. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
All right. Um, so we did discuss this in non-public. I would move to accept a student as presented today. Thank you, Duncan. Seconded by Mark. Any other discussion on this Rotary student?
No, just that we thought her materials were wonderful and she sounds lovely. So thank you for the effort that Rotary puts into this. I know that's a lot to.
Thank you very much for your support. Our Rotary Club very much appreciates the board supporting us.
Well, in that, let's try to do that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It was unanimous, Dean, so that you can't get any better than that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have the special education program approval and general supervision.
This is really a commercial that Mrs. Holliday and I would just like to share because it's something we'll be working on all year. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Holliday.
Sure, yeah. So our little nickname is PEGS. And, um, it's our program approval and general supervision that we're going to be going through, through the, uh, state of New Hampshire. And we are in a cohort of, I think it's about twenty other, but I think there's twenty-three of us altogether going through this cohort right now. What the state is trying to do is break us all up, um, all of the LEAs throughout the, the state into a six-year cycle. So this is our year. So we will go through our approval process. They'll take a look at, um, any, all requirements and all, um, all important information related to special education. They will be looking at all of it. And we will go through this process again. They, they start a new cycle every six years. So this is, this is our year. I'm actually excited from the aspect that of we are going to be doing it this fall, uh, as opposed to in the spring. I think it'll be a little easier for our department to be able to do it, um, because we'll be able to plan a little bit better this summer for that. Uh, and we'll be able to have, um, more opportunities to really focus on what we're doing as we start the school year. The second half of the year tends to be a lot more fast and furious in, in special education. So I'm, again, excited that we got picked for a fall cohort. And yeah, so we, we've got, um, some, some large components that we'll be doing and, um, we'll, we'll see how we do. I've been through, they, they have adjusted the process from when I have been through it before. There's a few changes to it. But overall, what typically happens is they'll go through, they'll, they'll look at every aspect of us. They'll also be coming in to do, um, classroom observations. They'll also be giving, doing a family caregiver listening sessions. There's just, there's a lot more that they've added onto this, um, than, than has happened in the past. But again, I, I, I think this is great because these are going to be components for us to go through. And we're, I, I think we're in a good place right now, um, to be as successful as we can. What we have found is in this new monitoring process, we haven't, I haven't spoken to a district yet that hasn't gotten, they hate it when we say this, but I don't have, I won't say it, is getting dinged on something. There might be something that they don't, um, they'd like us to look more closely at. So we, and if they do, what we do is we write a report and we take a look at how we can change our portfolios and what we can do to improve our practice if we get any area that we need to, to, to improve in. But I do feel that overall and where we're at, I think we're, we're going to be in good standing as we go through this process. And it's, it's that learning opportunity too, is, is if we are doing something, um, we, we have that opportunity, have the right people working with us to help us, to, to help us fix that.
Questions for Ms. Holliday?
How will the outcome of the monitoring be like shared with the community?
They will give a report to us and then they will ask us to have that report placed within the community. And, and we can choose as a group how we would like to do that. Some groups have put that on their website. Some groups have posted it on the wall or, or, or other locations. There's not a requirement presently for how to do that, but we do have to open it up so that the public knows how we did.
Anything else?
Like the, I, I know I'm beginning to sound like a broken record when I, when I say this needs to be part of the strategic plan, like it needs to be pulled in with that, with feedback from this and it's been pulled in and saying, okay, how are we, what are we going to do going forward?
Mrs. Holliday's been invited to be part of the team working on strategic plans. Because primarily that's a good connection.
If we're talking about five-year time lines or six-year evaluations or, okay, there you are. You already have, you already have your evaluation for your strategies looking out for, for whatever, for, in this case, special education.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the April twenty-twenty-six, Interlakes Middle High School trip to France. And I see Madame Bedford is with us this evening.
Bonsoir.
Oh, bonsoir. Oh, okay.
It's evening.
You can say bonjour all day long though. It's fine.
Thank you for the clarification. Salut.
So the World Language Department is sponsoring, uh, two trips next year. Uh, one to France for nine days, um, Paris and Nice. And, uh, one to Spain for seven days, which is, um, just in Madrid, but with day trips from Madrid. And, um, it's with Students Love Travel, which is the New Hampshire-based company that we've used. I've used them twice before and Jocelyn maybe four times, three or four times at least. And, um, they're really wonderful to work with and, um, all their, um, they're not really guides, tour directors are other teachers or people who have been teachers. So it really is an educational experience for everyone. And, um, for the French trip, we did, did decide to do nine days because we were doing two cities. And, um, one, the day to get there is really a full day. So, um, we added the extra two days. Um, and of course, if you do a nine-day trip, it's really only seven days in country. If you do a seven-day trip, it's really only five days in country. So.
Yeah. Thank you. What students? Is this seniors and juniors?
Um, usually we ask that they have taken up to French two, so it could be sophomores.
Thank you.
Does this company have experience with going to the Côte d'Azur, uh, is Nice?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
It's nice to hear it.
And I, I did kind of customize it. Um, they had another kind of trip planned out and it did seem a little too busy, um, a lot of getting on and off trains. And I thought, hmm, I think having one experience traveling by train, high-speed train, directly to Nice is probably where I would feel more comfortable with a group of students.
That's a great opportunity. I mean, that's, that's an unusual place to go in France. I think it's not Paris and it's not Normandy. So that's great.
Yes, and we have lovely dates.
And it's a wonderful place.
I think I've included the itinerary and we have, you know, some lovely day trips from there and both trips definitely fit in with our upper-level, um, French and Spanish courses when they study history and art. So, um, for instance, with French four, um, the Roman occupation of Gaul and being able to see Roman ruins without going to Italy. And the same thing with Spain, um, with the Arab influence. So I think students get a lot out of it.
Correct.
Senora Judge would be here this evening, but she's with the Athletic Awards. She also is the tennis coach.
So we'll take these one at a time. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the trip to France? It's a move. Seconded, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you, Madame. And then we have the trip to Spain. Thank you, Nancy. Seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Merci.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Au revoir, bonsoir.
Permission to hire except reservation. Mrs. Moriarty?
So typically the board has provided, um, we this authority during the summer months without we are able to act on any hiring changes that may come up with.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, moved by Mark, seconded by Jim. He's right in my ear.
Hey, I don't know.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parents Square introduction.
So this is really a short commercial as well. We will be shifting our communication tool for next school year to Parents Square. We use a multiple number of tools. Um, and this is really designed to be one that should hopefully make the more seamless opportunities for connecting with families and staff and community.
I, I kind of cut it off. It's a long video, but to kind of give you the idea, it's, right now, we have, um, multiple communication methods, as you're aware, email primarily. Academic information goes from our student information system by email, typically to families. Gmail, as you, you know, for school board members. And then we have SendIt for emergency notifications and SendIt as end of life. Uh, and then coaches and extracurriculars, it all becomes pretty complicated. So a huge number of school districts have gone to Parents Square. And, um, compared to other educational applications that we've ever investigated, this one is actually regarded pretty highly favorable by everyone we've spoken to, which is neighboring districts, administrators, teachers, families. And it'll make us a, a bit more streamlined. And the one added benefit in terms of strategic planning is uh, if we have community members, we currently don't give every community member an email address. And, um, maybe they might not want to check email. You know, they prefer a text message or it to be notified in another way. So this will allow us to build community lists as well, uh, that we can manage through one platform. So it should hopefully simplify things.
Great question, Mr. Shabon.
What personal information is more to the user when they download the app?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, I, so users don't have to download the app. That's an opt-in. So you will receive emails, uh, but if you wanted to customize what you receive and how you receive messages, um, meaning, um, alerts from the superintendent or building principal, you might want to get pushed through immediately, whereas, uh, academic information, you might want to digest nightly. You know, so if you have five messages, instead of getting pinged, you know, every time a teacher sends you a message, it might come at the end of the day. That sort of customization will come with voluntary download of the application.
But you didn't answer my question.
I can, I can answer.
I mean, if you do download.
I download it. You talked about this. I download, I use it just, uh, you can sign in with your Apple and stuff and nothing more. You can sign in with your email address and your name. And then you link, once we're all done with the school, you'd like would link up to your school. So it doesn't ask you for any information, except your name and email.
Okay. So that's what it says, like in the.
Yeah, and like you just sign in, like you would log into your bank account, like.
And it's not going to like look at your like contacts or anything like that?
I think you could add, yeah, it doesn't. I mean, I guess the, the school could add your child or something. I don't know. But I tried to, uh, demo it. It was just, I'll ask for me personally to like make an account with my email address and everything.
I haven't, to be truthful, I haven't investigated the user end of the application because it's not required, you know? Um, so we, I haven't done that piece yet.
So I haven't done that piece yet. In fact, it's, you're the first person to actually reference it, so it's interesting. So I'll do some more homework for you. But the information we'll be sending is the same information that we have in our CIST, student information system, which is the same thing we have in SendIt, email and telephone.
Right. Mr. Juan Halli, you had a question.
Two items. One, do we, so one, on the, on the school side of things, what is the overhead in terms of like the person that has to build the communities and so on and so forth? The systems that I've worked with, like invariably the person who has an additional duty to manage permissions and all that kind of thing. Invariably, that becomes their full-time job and they have to go see a medical professional because they try to.
I'm glad you referenced that, so that falls on my team. But we currently have people that manage our, what we call integrations, so they, they are, it is their full-time job. We have one person that is an integrations assistant and another one that we are transferring off of that into, onto this other person. So as we take on new products, they are learning how those, how to integrate between what we have and what we want it to be. This will be an undertaking for us this summer for sure. But we have to do it because our emergency communications is, is going away, so we need a tool. It just, this made sense to go, there are reasons why we went with this tool. To tell you about the groups, though, that should be easy because it's getting the information from our student information system, which means we can distill it by what I call groups, parents or staff, student grade level, building. So right now, we currently have groups, if I wanted to send a message to every parent in part, in San Francisco School, that's one group. If I want to send it to every sixth grader in the district, that's a different group. That'll all come from the integration with our CIST. So the good news is the data lives somewhere already. So it's just making it clean to the net, to this new platform.
Duncan, sorry.
That was question one.
Sorry. The second, the second question is, what is the redundancy measure? Because invariably, when you need it the most, the parent needs to send out something at three o'clock in the morning. I'm not talking about a snow day. I'm talking about something really important, not this particular year, whatever. Like invariably, that's when things go, that's when things.
So that's a, that's a great question, so I will share with you. SendIt, which we have been using now for several years, got bought out by our website company called Final Site. SendIt is pretty user-friendly. Their new product, not so much. So we have that product already in our back pocket right now because it's part of our website, but it doesn't do nearly the things that we have here. So that is a backup and that can send a message to all groups, all users if we need to. We could easily send an email through Alma to all users and I guess you could also use MUR. I'm not sure if there's another.
MUR radios, but the one that's embedded within the website is, is an emergency backup. It's just not a good communication.
It, it's, it's not good, sorry to interrupt. It's not good for, it might be good for three users, you know, SAU and some building people to know how to use. It's not good for the daily or the weekly classroom newsletter, school newsletter, bus changes, book fair, like all of those sort of announcements you want to send. You don't want to be using that platform, so.
We will still have Alma. That is our student information system, but we will be asking everyone to use this as the communication channel.
I would say to, like hearing the feedback from all of our sessions directly from people in the community, this is like exactly what everybody has children in schools.
I would agree. It's a way for people in the community who don't have any children to get attached to. Maybe they get the weekly newsletter if they want that or, you know, there are celebrations that are being, you know, maybe the FBLA photo of them.
Yeah, and it kind of allows you a platform that then you could choose to take as much as you want from it or shut off all your notifications or do whatever, but you have the ability to.
Duncan, you had. No, I mean, just my, my perception of what you're saying and as a parent, the, the needs that I see, this will make, I, I, I hear that you anticipate that this will make your life easier and that things will go more smoothly and you'll be able to tailor messages more effectively. And as a parent, I, I can see the need for that and I, I think this would be a good tool.
And to piggyback on that, I think it'll make your life easier when you have one student, maybe at the middle high school, one student still at S T S, one that's involved in extracurriculars. And right now, our extracurriculars, if they're on a field trip and the bus is running late, how do the teachers communicate with families? I mean, they can call Mrs. Moriarty, she can send out a SendIt, but they wouldn't have the ability. And same with our coaches, this is, this is the big one. Right now, our coaches are, we, we can monitor emails, so that's what we ask them to use. But, you know, practicality, you know, you email a parent and you're hoping that the parent's texting their kid and, you know, so this will enhance security in that, in that avenue as well.
And SendIt is pretty clunky. I mean, you say yes relatively user-friendly.
On, on our end?
Right.
But, but when you receive it and you get the tux bubble and, yeah.
I mean, it's fine. It works, but this will be nice. Mark, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Next up, we have first and final reading. This is Moriarty.
So in, we are proposing this evening that the board consider approving her first and final reading, a Title One Family Community Engagement Policy. It is a required policy. Quite frankly, it's one that we should have already had in our policy book. I do believe that it, through all of our monitoring and so forth, it had been maybe in the Title One program and assumed to be a policy. But as we looked further, as we were preparing to submit some materials and going back in time, it has not been officially adopted. So we are proposing this evening. It is built off of, of the New Hampshire School Board Association, this model policy.
And it did go to policy review on Friday because Duncan and I were at the leadership meeting. We tried to call Shalan, who wasn't able to take this paper, but Mark was there, so we made him a hot-halt member, reviewed it and approved it.
So I'm asking that the board consider taking action this evening. That will allow us to submit it with this year's materials.
So moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments?
Assumptions that we've been through legal review, all that kind of things.
So it's not one that we sent to the attorney, but it is from the New Hampshire School Awards Association.
So it's their stock.
Yeah, yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. Strategic planning update?
I, I have a question, Mr. Chair. Are we able to move the dog up a bit?
I'm very patient. I was making him sweat. That's very nice of you, Shalan. I was thinking it's.
We're all going to be here.
Sure. Rob, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. First off, I don't want you guys to be hungry when you vote, so.
Are they dog biscuits?
They are dog biscuits. What's that? I tested them every day.
Oh, wait, but they're cheap. Like we can eat them.
I got two dogs.
They're not dog biscuits. I don't have one.
Which color do you like? They are. I just named one of the dogs just to make sure they're so good. So after the last meeting, you had asked that I meet with parents. So we scheduled a meeting at the elementary school to meet with the parents to see if there's any concerns or comments. We had six people show up, two of which my mom and stepdad. Lynn Layton was a select court member and her husband, and then two parents. So a very positive conversation we had, not a lot of questions. The only, I don't even want to say concerns. The questions that came up were allergies and fear of dogs, right? So explain that to them, that, you know, very structured places where the kids can interact with dogs or the staff and schedule times. So it's not, the dog's not free-range. If it gets voted yes, it doesn't just walk around the school. It stays with me. We schedule times to go to classrooms if there's no allergies in that classroom. I did talk with a school nurse that said that allergies are very, mine are usually with dogs. They are, there are some severe allergies, but the, the number of severe allergies are very, very low. So we had the meeting. That went good. I did a quick presentation form. We got some newsletters or some flyers we put out in the front lobby in case parents wanted to grab something, look at it. It was just kind of a quick outline of the presentation I did. What else did we do? I think that's it. I had some information if you guys care to see it. I have the flyers we made. I didn't bring enough copies for everybody, but there's a couple of flyers there. Those are just the flyers that we left at school. And then I just printed up some sheets about Your Pups, which is the company that I've been in contact with. So again, not enough copies for everybody, but if you want to pass those around, there's a couple of copies there.
Officer Rob did an excellent job. Although it was a small audience, you were very.
It was a small audience.
You were well-prepared.
Yes. So this is something I'm super passionate about. Hopefully that, that shows. So this is something that I've worked on or been thinking about for over a year now and really been working on it for like the last five or six months. So a lot of my work and time has gone into it. I think it's a very positive thing for, not just our school, but for, for our community. So everything that we've kind of focused on and we talked about in the last meeting was really for the school, but it's really a positive thing for the community in, in general, not just the school. One of the questions that came up, too, was, you know, say Multivir has something that happens and they, they want to use the dog to help, then that's something that obviously I will do. So it's not just our school district. It's, surrounding towns would be useful for that, too.
Great.
Any questions?
So Rob is looking for an approval for this tonight. Would anybody make a motion?
The whole.
Yep. Relatively sure that the dress is awesome. Duncan, I've just been to the vet and dropped a bunch of change on, on animals. Heartworm, Brady shots, like all the, all the things. In addition, since it's set all under the thirty across the two.
Yep, that falls next.
Both Mr. Boucher and I recommend this.
So the staff, the staff was all like.
I got, I put, in the, in the email we sent out, I gave my email address. I got two letters from parents that couldn't make it to the meeting in support of it. I haven't had a single negative comment about it. So we've had it out there for parents to talk to me and there hasn't, all the conversation I've had, I've talked with like OT to see if they could use it for some like physical therapy type stuff. They're willing to, they're like, you know, I never thought about that, but yes. So just a bunch of different, the staff has been really on board. I, I really, I haven't had a single negative comment about it.
Oh, my God, do vote on it. I'm going to say this tonight.
We'll get you another one in thirty seconds. You lost your cookie?
Yep.
So we can say I have pasta cookies. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other questions for Officer Rob?
Are you ready to be famous?
I'm jealous.
Actually, my biggest fear is that I'm not going to be anymore a doctor, a popular man.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Officer Rob. You're doing a thorough job with this.
One more thing that I want to mention, so today is my twenty-sixth year anniversary of law enforcement. It's been really cool working with you because when I got hired, your dad really worked with me, so. It's been a great process. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary. Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six, isn't it, Rob?
Yeah.
Crazy. Now we're looking at it from my end.
In the last two years, the school's been the best of the places.
Well, it's been a great. What's the dog's name?
So the interesting thing is with Your Pups, I don't know if we get to pick. So the training process for the dog is a year long. So I don't, I'm assuming that in that training that the dogs already have kind of been given a name.
I can assume, although it may have been run by you.
Right, yep. So you don't really get to pick the breed of the dog. You're going to get what you get. So they, they, I'll meet with them and say, hey, listen, this is what we want to do with the dog. During the early part of the, the training before I get involved, they're going to pick a dog that they think has the best temperament to be in the school. And then there's like, this is your dog. So I don't know, I don't.
You're probably right.
Get to choose much and I'm assuming that in the training, they're already going to have a name, but maybe we'll find one with a blue collar and they will be blue for Blue Wave, so that's what I'm hopeful. That was your pick, right?
Yeah.
It works.
And after doing six years.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you need a second?
Okay, thank you. Since we offered the courtesy to Officer Rob, this gentleman, we have one gentleman left here. Would you like to? I'll, is there any final public comment?
Well, I'd just explain my presence.
Sure.
You know that there is this group of grandfathers, they call themselves the Light It Up Committee, at least if they'll listen to me, that's what home is. And they've been engaged in a fundraising effort to provide funding for capital assets in the school district. Retired lawyer, practiced for fifty years, and I have tried to work with the grandfathers to make sure that they are on the right track with corporate documents, with legal documents and with their five oh eight C three status application. For a shortcut, I suggested it may have agreed that all their significant fundraising will result in donations directly to the school district. And that allows a lot of statements to be made to contributors that we are not ready to make yet. And there's no active plan to raise money that the grandfathers would hold.
I thought we'd gone to grandparents.
Grandparents, I, that's correct. It is name the grandparents and I am trying to transition them so that parents would feel more included together with the grandparents. And in the not-too-distant future, I think that that group will need to make a report to superintendent and her staff as to where their status is and perhaps to your leadership group. That should remain formal business for the board as a whole. But the effort is ongoing. They've worked for almost a year. They've significant results, but not what they had hoped to attain after a year. But still very significant tangible results. And I wanted to, I have quite a bit of experience serving myself and the committee. Thank you all for your work on behalf of your community. I know how many evenings it takes and I do want to say something about AI at the beginning of your meeting. And so I wanted to get a feel for the group and its agenda, make sure that an effort that's directed at athletic facilities and at time to practice and perhaps on that AI idea where the AI is to help the teachers with tools. I would make the analogy to helping your coaching staff with physical equipment and assets, time for repetitive exercise at the sport kids are trying to play and enhancing your overall efforts by having the athletic program fit and support public education. I'm a big fan of the public education system getting stronger and personally I'm concerned about that. Anyway, that's it. I'm just here to watch and make a date for later.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. So can you just give us your name?
Yes, sorry. My name is Greg Sandoemersky. I should have mentioned at the beginning, I had one grandson that graduated last year. I've got one who's graduating this year from the high school. I've got two juniors who will graduate next year. That's four, and one grandson who is just going to sixth grade.
Wow.
So, and my nickname in town was Coach Sando, and I was volunteer coach with the boys soccer team for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. But I'm not a grandson, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming, Pam. All right, Mary, strategic planning update?
Yes, so pages ninety-eight to a hundred. So ninety-eight is just really the overview with five phases. The phase B, bringing a strategic plan draft to the board in December twenty twenty-five for the board to take action. Phase one on page ninety-nine just outlines what we've done to date to try to gather feedback. This is our feedback phase. We are, right now, what is open and it's available, probably the easiest way is to go to our website. There's a pop-up. It's a community survey. It's a short survey with input from some board members. I did really tailor it to be really what do, you know, an effective school in five years as well as looking at the vision of a Laker, those qualities, and what is the best way? And what is the best way to connect with people in the community? So, um, I think there are nineteen respondents to date. Um, so what? We had talked about doing a mailer, um, to each home, but that really turned out to be, I would say prohibitive. So, um, we opted to do, um, advertising in the newspaper. Um, and then also trying to do in our school newsletters, putting out flyers. But it is a, when it says community, it means all stakeholders. So it's open to everybody, staff, students, um, parents with kids in our school system, parents with students not in our school system and community perhaps.
Great. Are we, um, sending it out through like the send it or like a text message?
I didn't do, um, I didn't do that. I was trying to be fair. I, you know, it's like I use the, like it's hard because I can't do it to the whole community. But if that's something I certainly can push it out to send it and see if that generates more responses, so.
I mean, I, I responded to the survey, so I'm one of the nineteen. I did it on my phone. It was like a five-minute exercise. It was easy, but I would recommend that we send it out through send it.
Yep, yeah. So I can do that. We can do that and hopefully, and maybe ask in that if you know a community member, if you know somebody who's not on our, to try to pass it upon.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Mary. As one who has participated in a number of fundraising exercises face-to-face knocking doors.
Yeah.
That's how that gets done.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree. I, feedback and fundraising. So word of mouth. So tell a friend.
Right, exactly. Who better than your next door neighbor?
And then on page one hundred, just that is our writing team. These are people who have committed to being available in the summer. Uh, we have four dates. Um, you know, we are trying to be ambitious and really focused, um, to take the information and try to compile it into a draft strategic plan then that we would, in the fall, bring back out to the community for feedback and then back to the board.
Thank you. Mark, do we have any more public input?
No, sir.
Anymore?
Any?
Any?
No.
Well, in that case, I'm gonna close public comment because we've been going on for plenty of time. Seven thirty-four. Thank you. Master professional development.
Yes, so, um, you had, uh, presented last month and seeking the board's approval to, which is in alignment with the collective bargaining agreement between the board and the chief of student.
Thank you, Siobhan. Seconded by Nancy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have the SPP Suicide Convention Plan.
Yes, and again, uh, this was presented last month.
Yep.
Um, with the board to consider approving it.
So moved and seconded by Siobhan, moved by Duncan. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. ILSD Data Security and Governance Policy. We talked about that in non-public. Everybody want to make a motion? Thank you, Duncan. Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Lakes Region High School Consortium Agreement.
So this was presented last month with the board's consideration. This would allow opportunity for students, um, with the Lakes Region participating schools to take advantage if there are, um, opportunities for enrollment in classes.
And again, just a reminder to the board that this is not a financial obligation whatsoever. This is just basically the schools getting together and spitballing on how we might leverage each other's resources for our students. So moved. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And now we're gonna discuss the lending decision for boiler replacements and HVAC. I'm recusing myself entirely from this discussion and Mr. Billings is gonna take over leading the charge.
Two hours.
It's on page forty-seven.
One four seven?
Yes.
So maybe I can help with framing. So the board recall that the, um, decision was to ask the community to allow for us to borrow up to one point two million dollars to do the boiler replacements and the HVAC upgrades. Uh, there are two options to consider how you would want to go about borrowing that money. Um, option one is a bond bank and option two is commercial bank. That is Meredith Village Savings Bank. The bond bank has a guaranteed maximum rate of four point two five percent. I'll let Mrs. Dolph explain the three point six six there in a moment. Commercial bank has, um, an interest rate of four point five percent. Um, so really the decision that the board has to consider this evening is how would you like to borrow the money? Do you want to borrow it through commercial lending or do you want to borrow it through a bond bank? And maybe you can talk.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I, what I did professionally for fifty years since I was a public finance lawyer. I did bond issues and finance work for public entities. It was total coincidence.
It hasn't changed much.
And I should also, in the name of disclosure, mention that at times my firm is a central bank and other bond banks in other states. If you have any technical questions, maybe don't mind if I, I mean, who were first public, I happen to know a lot about this subject.
Well, that's wonderful. We've learned a great deal over the last few months. So, do you want to explain what the three point six six?
Sure. So, um, the bond bank did a preliminary review of, um, where they think the interest rate will come in, um, on July sixteenth. Um, so we won't actually have that rate until July sixteenth. Um, they're predicting three point six six. Typically, it, it sounds like they set their guaranteed maximum and typically the rate does come in lower. So, um, we're presenting to you worst case scenario, um, and then where they're thinking it's going to be trending. And so the bond bank, um, compared to the commercial lending, the commercial bank would range anywhere from fifty-six hundred dollars to about twenty-seven thousand dollars more, um, than the bond bank, um, over that, that lifetime of the loan.
If the three point six.
If the six is, is approved, yes, if it comes in at that rate. Um, a couple of other things to note, um, with Meredith Village, we are able to pay down or pay off the balance without penalty sooner. If we were to go with the bond bank, we would be, um, tied to the schedule that they presented. And in year one, it's just an interest-only payment. So it really does extend that repayment over six years versus Meredith Village where it would be five years or less.
And our recommendation is that you bond the full amount. Later we'll talk about fund balance and some pieces. I think last month we talked about that possibility of maybe borrowing less. I think there are things that are, um, that are more pressing right now. Um, so we have the authority to borrow one point two. We're recommending you borrow the one point two for the project.
One point five.
One point five, did I?
Sorry.
It's okay.
One point five for the project.
What is the difference? I'm sure we talked about this a while back. What is the difference between the guaranteed maximum? Like I understand that numeric difference between the guaranteed maximum rate and the preliminary analysis, but in terms of, um, I mean, they're both coming from the bond bank. So what is, what is, why the two different analyses?
Right. So when, when we receive our application, they give us the guaranteed maximum rate. They're saying your rate will not go over four point two five percent. Right now, they did a preliminary look at the rates and they're projecting that our rate would come in at three point six six.
And that's a projection.
It's a projection.
When, when, when is that like at a final, when, when would that like?
When do they decide?
Decide, yeah.
Yes, so it's July sixteenth.
Did you get any follow-up on the interest rates from the commercial banks?
So the four point five percent is the set rate.
The benefit of commercial banking is you can pay it down.
Yeah, what would be the proposal for us to pay it down, like take money out of the general like reserve fund or something?
No, it's a CIP, it's a.
Well, yeah, but how, how would we pay it down quicker?
Sure. So we could use end-of-year fund balance.
In future years.
In future years.
I mean, you could, you, you could make the decision to use all of your fund balance for this and borrow less.
Yeah, and you can't do that with the bond.
You cannot.
You can't pay it down.
You cannot pay it down early.
So you could hypothetically save tons of thousands of dollars in interest if we decided to pay it down. Correct.
Historically, the town and the school has used ETFs as a quasi-savings bank to build up to some level of that total cost. You go out and price an excavator, a department of public works, a million-dollar piece of equipment. The other key point is whenever you're dealing with bonds versus an asset, it's duration matching. I don't want to see a significant amount of money coming out of ETFs in this case. And the reason is, again, the matching of liabilities, the matching of duration more directly. Your lending and your borrowing works that way. But the key is that this investment is going to benefit people over the next twenty, thirty years. Why should we be asking today's families over the next five years to cover that cost? Or to do it out of an ETF right now that we've got? Operating monies and capital investments are different asset classes. So I, I, I like the flexibility. There was a, you just don't know sitting here today what that rate is gonna be. But.
I thought we did know what the rate was.
Well, we know, but we don't know necessarily across all three spectacles.
For Meredith Village, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, that rate is set.
That rate's set. And then our max rate is set.
Yes.
And then our variable rate is between three point six six and four point two five.
Yes, it's a projection.
Okay.
So my bias has been commercial bank because of the flexibility and the ability to duration match and which has equity and who contributed to it.
Yeah, yeah, you're saying like Meredith Village personally, yeah.
So Mark touched on it. What is, do we know? Like it's more of an asset class. What is, what is the, um, lifespan of, of this boiler?
Thirty.
And it could be twenty and like, and like everything happens, right? So it could be like five days.
We estimate thirty years.
And the reason looking at a five-year window for borrowing is I anticipate through the strategic planning process, there will be discussions about a bigger possibility of borrowing money to do, you know, more significant upgrades. Our locker rooms, um, that's one that has been put off for some time. Bathrooms, things along that line. So the five-year, um, kind of falls nicely in, I think, a window when you might be looking to borrow more money. There will also be, the Honeywell leases will be coming off, um, within that time period.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty.
Yeah, so I think there's an opportunity to pre-up some money in the budget, um, to shift to different borrowing. If that makes sense.
And Ashley, what are you recommending we do here?
I do not have a recommendation. I'm presenting two options. I'm gonna place Switzerland on this one.
Come on, come on.
It depends on what you want to do, right? So if you want to have the opportunity to pay down early, then I think Meredith Village is.
The question that we don't have the answer to is what would make them change their interest rate from four and a half, either higher or lower?
Five point two.
They go higher.
Yeah. But it's fixed as soon as we make the decision.
Okay, so we hold off on the decision for thirty days. Fed funds fall by fifty basis points. Is that still your number?
So.
But the next decision.
We.
It's rhetorical.
Okay, I was going to say, this is the number they gave us with their commitment letter and we've extended it twice now and they have not changed the rate. They've held that.
Meredith Village.
Rates have been relatively stable, but there will, there would be inevitably at some point in time, oh, that rate's gonna change.
Right.
Be higher, be at low.
Yes, this, this offer from Meredith Village is through. Is through the end of this week, I believe. We have to get, one way or another, have to give an answer, um, after this board meeting to them. They've been very patient with us.
Yeah, there's something to be said in my opinion about, you know, the range. Look, if it's fifty-six hundred dollars, that's kind of one point five million dollar deal. That's like tough change. So you have a community member who's participating in other things that we're doing for fields and whatever, you know, you, you naturally want to look at some of them like that or for a bond bank, in my opinion.
I think your member of the public has something to share.
I guess the question I have is, uh, did, has the town taken the substance there to authorize bonds? That's a done deal?
There we have it.
That was in the annual district.
As long as that's a done deal.
Yep.
Often in presentations that I've made on this type of subject, the question comes up of transactional fees. You will need a bond counsel, but the bond bank is set up. Instead of every town having to go to the market on its own and bear all that cost, they will bundle towns up together, come up with a common denominator and go to the market for you. And they enhance the attractiveness. So that's the purpose in the National Bond Bank. It's a public entity. It's trying to provide a public service. This is a wonderful commercial bank. They are not a public entity. Their bottom line is not to support the public. However, it can be at times that they'll offer a rate for their own reasons, based on their own sources of funding, that is competitive with what the bond markets produce. Theoretically, the bond market is a managed tax-exempt investment. And, uh, that means that the interest paid on their bonds is exempt from tax. I'm sure you know that. That's, that has nothing to do with the commercial bank. Technically, there are some rules you have to comply with when you issue tax-exempt bonds. It should be a no-brainer to comply with those with a boiler system in a public school. It's in private use. The bank, there are no such rules and there is some more latitude. Those tax-exempt bond investors, you can't just prepay them without paying premium upfront for the right to call the debt. The bank is only happy if you will call the, uh, pay the debt in advance. The amounts are small enough here that you, you know, it probably doesn't matter. I just want to stress that I'm sure that three sixty-six is not a floor. They've said to you, that's a current guess. And it's not a floor.
Right.
They might have given you a quote and market conditions could improve between now and July. It's only a month, but that's been known to happen. That's all I can say.
The key, I think, is also this intangible of whose benefits from this and for how long do they benefit from this? And do we want to put that entire financial burden on current taxpayers?
So.
That's where it will come in.
So the five years, right? Again, you may pay it off early, so you may limit how long that tax burden is. But paying the, um, you know, paying this is something the voters have agreed to. So that will get worked into our budgets. Can we?
Just, I'm with you. But I think that your last point is, if I have a, 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 a commercial bank or anything like that, I guess that's older. But it seems to me that you, you make a great point, like you put on the current populace, the current tax, taxpayers. But that also provides an opportunity for future taxpayers to invest in additional capital, capital improvements or capital projects, I guess, may be a better.
Well, all these deals are still for five. We're looking at the same term, no matter what.
Again.
No matter.
Whatever. The commercial allows you, should you have fund balance, you want to pay it off.
Pay it off in a year or two. You get your interest down and you save.
Yep, and get it on your books. That's one of them.
I would also suggest, because you referred to the bank as the bank, it is a mutual bank. And it does have as part of its stated goals, service to the community.
And it, and it does do that.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to question, um, more this is this particular commercial bank, mutual bank or not, it, it then it has shareholders. To whom it has some duty to produce a return. The bond bank does not have that.
Understand? That's all. Chris Charlie now.
Yeah, so he's recusing, he is recusing himself because of his relationship with the commercial bank. So he wanted to make sure that it is very clear that their wall. So he wanted to make sure that it is very clear that their wall to be.
Supposed to upset himself, because his mere presence.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Then, hold it one second, because I just ran into a stone wall.
Okay.
Meredith Village Savings Bank and Bank of New Han, or not, Bank of New Hampshire, the other banks in that family of banks, I'm a corporator.
You wanna recuse yourself too?
I get a dinner once a year. Maybe, maybe we have legal counsel who could apply that from the floor.
But here's what I would say, if you want, that there are five other board members.
We still maintain a forum.
So we have, we have maintained a forum, so then maybe Duncan takes over in terms of solitaires.
So I have to come up with how to craft a motion. Oh, no, but I can make the motion if I would chair the meeting.
No, it's there.
I make a motion that we uh accept the commercial bank offer of four point five percent, allow, thereby allow I and Mr. Law to answer the mail affirmatively that this is.
I second the connection for everything. Hearing no other questions, there's a motion on the floor, let's vote to accept it.
So the motion is yes to accept.
Yes to commercial bank, with Meredith Village Savings Bank.
At a lending rate of.
Four point five.
Point five.
Cause you would vote no.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have to abstain.
Okay. Do you and Charlie abstain, and the motion carries?
So it's four to one.
Four, one, to one.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Four to one to two.
Oh, two abstentions.
Two.
Yeah.
He wasn't.
Of six.
You can come in, Charlie.
Does he get up to that?
Well, I don't know, you left the room, so we're not sure, we should count you as an abstention or not.
No, I wasn't present.
Okay, yeah.
So four to one to one.
But I had to abstain.
So the minutes will reflect that the chair left.
But thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Thank you for that explanation about the bond bank, knowing not much at all, that was very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well.
It was a group effort.
Mark, I did.
Mark.
I'm still incorporating.
Realizing he might have a conflict too, so.
Okay. Meal prices, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Okay, on page.
Page one forty eight.
In your packet, um, is just an overview of how we come up with the pit, the the meal pricing, um, and so we are proposing a fifteen cent increase for lunch prices, um, with no increase for breakfast. Over the last two years, we've increased prices twenty five cents each year, and um through the tool, we have, we are mandated to at least increase by ten cents. And again, this tool tries to help us close the gap from where the federal, um, the federal pricing is and where our pricing is. And so rather than the ten cents, we are, we are asking for a fifteen cent increase, to try to help close that gap.
So the federal pays an amount.
He did not, he used an Excel spreadsheet that was given to me two days ago, but.
Which is a very pain, they would benefit from AI.
They, they might.
But just to be clear, the student reduced price is unchanged.
That is correct, that maintains at the forty cents. The the federal reimbursement rate is typically forty cents less, um, and that's why we maintain it at that. At that level.
So to, to review, I, I know you already said something, just saying that back.
Sure. No, that's okay.
And twenty three, twenty four, and in twenty twenty four, twenty five school years, we increased twenty five cents for lunch, fifteen cents for breakfast for a total of, until tonight, fifty cents for lunch, thirty cents for breakfast, over those two years.
Yes.
And the proposition this evening is for an increase of an additional fifteen cents for lunch.
Yes.
Other questions for Ms. Doll? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some.
Moved and seconded, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you very much.
I wanna just share, um, we do continue to struggle with unpaid balances. We have approximately about thirteen thousand dollars of unpaid balances that we are working very extensively trying to, to get. And, you know, it continues to be a challenge, um, and, you know, I don't know if there's organizations, sometimes organizations have made donations, um, to try and reduce expenses families have, um, so kind of putting that out there, I guess, into the community, that, you know, there's despite a lot of efforts of trying to get that money, there still seems to be about thirteen thousand dollars that we are struggling to collect.
But to be clear, for any public that might be listening, we never deny a kid a meal.
Correct, that's correct, correct, kids eat. And we do a lot, you know, families, um, sometimes it's the hard part, trying to get that connection, and we do use our outreach counselor to help, you know, if there's, you know, if we understand what's happening, you know, how we can be best supportive, um, but sometimes it's difficult to get a response, so.
And I would also just state that this, we are in this situation, but it's not unique to our district.
Correct.
Um, I think it is definitely something that we're seeing around the state and nation, so.
Do we have any data, like, I mean, we're, I guess we're assuming that as people that can't afford it, we don't actually know who is not paying their lunch bill rate?
We do know, um, the business office.
Could be me.
Yeah.
I'll let you.
You would be getting notices, um, you know, again, it's that's.
But I think historically that has been a problem, that there has been a kind of lag, and then underlying that, there is a persistent poverty issue, and.
And, well, in my experience was that there are families who just do not wanna stay. They love the form about being eligible for a reduced lunch.
It's complex, right? It's really, it is feeding, feeding children should not be so complex, but it's a very complex um matter, and you know, I think it probably runs the gamut, right? I think there may be people not paying attention to the information and may have the ability to pay, and then there are people who may not feel comfortable sharing what some of their struggles are. So, you know, it's something we're trying to, you know, continuously work through, but it is, I think, an awareness for the board to have that, you know, that is thirteen thousand dollars that, you know, has been consumed. And, you know, at some point, if we can't collect that, the school district will have to settle that. So that's the challenge.
What, I always add four collections. And I'm not suggesting that we wait for them after around the fourth double four, I just want, what do you?
Here's what, yeah. So, and this is not something I'm recommending at all at this point, um, but, you know, some districts have, have tended to go to small claims court. And some of their rationale, I think, has been, they tried to get families to fill out the forms, because if a family does qualify, then not only supports the school lunch program, it supports possibly Title One funding and other things, and so I.
They're tied, they're, they're in lockstep with the rate of students who use reduced rate, reduced lunch.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put that application through AI.
Yeah, it's, well, what I'm wondering if parents where.
Will it be on school parents start next year and stuff, will you be able to?
We will be able to put applications and things right in it, um, so again, maybe those are ways to just more simply communicate, but.
Thirteen thousand of what?
Thirteen thousand dollars worth of food.
You were shocked of, of, of what?
Of how much?
Out of how much? Is that a three?
Oh, out of how much we sold?
How much the daily sales?
Yeah, Ashley will have to look that up.
I'll have to look that up.
Yeah, she'll, she does have that number, but.
That's a relevant piece of information.
Yeah, it's a small amount compared to the bigger number, but, I mean, we're, we're over four hundred thousand for our program itself.
I know. What? So we were thirteen thousand dollars shortfall on a four hundred thousand dollar, two percent?
That's with labor and everything, so, I'd have to check the daily sales, I'll, I'll get that number too, though, yeah.
What percentage of our students, um, our families don't get lunch or breakfast at all, bring their lunch, is there?
Uh, we, I think we can tell you how many lunches we sell and how many breakfast, I think that would be hard for us to, to do an analysis of who didn't eat.
Yeah. I just wonder, I know that there are districts that have just decided to continue doing the free lunch for all that we had during COVID, and
Yeah. Yep.
I just don't know what.
And that may be something during the budget process to consider.
Because the, the food insecurity rates went down so dramatically, like twenty percent difference in the couple of years that that program was in, it was remarkable. You know?
It, it definitely created a shift, I would say, in all of our communities of the ability to, it seemed to be after that, that those, that debt, that food lunch debt seemed to be something that has yet to be resolved.
Interesting.
Like Caleb had a comment on it, you know, we had, we had the solution.
I was wondering what happens with, like, uh, account balance after a student graduates?
So, so the, the district has to absorb that, so we use our general funds to then pay for that balance.
So you're saying that there's a positive balance?
If there's positive.
Oh, if there's a positive, oh, so we reach out to the family and we would return that for those funds that they would like to, or we ask them if they want to donate those funds to
Okay.
our student in need fund, um, and we could use those funds to help offset a future balance for someone who might need some assistance.
Okay.
And we did put in a policy that, um, five dollars or less.
Recently this year. It would just go, go back to that student, because student in need.
The general fund, because students spending a lot of time in energy trying to chase people down for a balance.
Yeah.
Cause they all are loaded, like they only accept a reloaded card now right at the cafeteria, like you can't use cash or anything.
Three dollars.
Correct. Uh, well, they might still take cash, they still take cash, yes.
No, you can, you can accept that cash.
You can pay the cash or your, or your students.
Yeah. Student number.
I, I, student number, okay.
You were wondering about how many people, like, actually get lunch? I'd say it's probably pretty close to like fifty fifty, or maybe like sixty percent of people get lunch and forty bring it from home. It's definitely like relatively even split.
Depends on the day of the week.
Yeah, depends what they're serving.
Well, it's interesting, like, I was, all jokes aside, I had a hundred and two dollar balance there today, and my daughter brings lunch to school every single day, and so we had a balance, and I was like, what are you doing? She's like, oh, I decided to get pizza there today, or I get chocolate, like, you know, she wasn't even telling us, she just said, great.
So.
She's using her student ID, like rocking up, uh.
We do run into those situations.
Join the club, Jeremy, join the club.
Now, um, I didn't mean to distract this evening, I just want the board to be aware, we are holding that right now. Um, and the business office is being, you know, very diligent, but that may be something at some point, we're gonna need a different strategy.
Excellent, anything else on the food? Hearing none. Former preliminary end of year fund balance.
Pages one forty nine and one fifty, um, we have made some adjustments to this, uh, we saw it last month with some ideas. Certainly, um, Mrs. Dolla can go down with page one forty nine, which basically has us at a fund balance of about one point two million. And can certainly, I think it might be helpful for people to understand where that comes from.
Do you mind if I just jump back? So we did skip over the year to date budget report, which would be, that's okay, um, it will, it's, it's fine.
Oh, so sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I can stop. I just wanna highlight it because Mrs. Moriarty was just going to run through some of the some of the high level items that really make up that one point three million, um, that is showing as available on your year to date budget report. Um, so, did you want me to run through them?
That would be.
That would be, okay. So you don't even need to go back to it, I just wanted to point out that we, our available balance right now, as of yesterday, was one, around one point three million. Um, so the items that really are making up that balance are special education contracted service, we have about five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars available. Facilities, wages and benefits, two hundred and fifty thousand. Vocational transportation, one hundred and sixty five thousand, and again, that was due to a grant that we received that was unanticipated, and we were very excited to receive that. And then retiree health insurance, three hundred and seventy thousand, so those, those items collectively add up to your one point three million.
And the five hundred and eighty five thousand in special education contracted services, we needed those services, they weren't able to fill them, so you know, I think if the reality is, then we are, we're shifting, you know, staff in other ways, trying to make do. It's not, you know, that is just a reality that unfortunately likely struggle, so do contracted services.
Is, obviously, we somewhat understand the carry forward to the next year. So the question is, how big could that number be? If we didn't assign any of the unencumbered funds? You're saying that would be one point two million?
Yes.
But that has.
As of today.
As of.
But that has expenditures, but those are already received.
Correct, that is our best estimate where we think we will land in terms of a fund balance.
As of June thirtieth.
And it is an estimate, I think it's important to realize things are still in motion, um, you know, there's still a little time, as well as we are dependent on a lot of people in terms of, you know, we have processes in place, but POs and invoices and, you know, there, um, there may be things that, um, you know, we are not aware of at this moment, that still need to be paid. So on page one fifty, we have, um, something for the board to consider, I think it's important to realize this is your decision in terms of how you would like to spend this. You can do a number of things. One thing you could do is you could retain money that you would bring forward to the twenty six, twenty seven school year. The most that you could retain is almost eight hundred thousand dollars. We're not recommending that, um, because there were things during the budget process that were quite frankly deferred to potential fund balance. A large number of that was in facilities, um, so I think during the budget process, we deferred about five hundred thousand dollars, um, we are requesting five hundred sixty thousand to continue to do, um, ongoing improvements and maintenance of our facilities, salaries and benefits. One of the things that occurred is, um, within the support staff contract, there was new language added that if somebody was hired at a higher step than somebody who was previously hired when the contract limited the placement of the step, at step four, um, that that adjustment would be made. So those adjustments were made, they came to light after the budget process, so there's money there, as well as, um, we are improving funds here because we budgeted for the retiree health insurance at, um, the advantage plan was budgeted at four hundred a month plus a seventeen percent increase. That rate changes in January, unlike all of our other rates, which change in July. What we have learned is that plan is subsidized by the federal government by about seven hundred dollars each month, so really the plan is closer to eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars. That subsidy may go away, but we budgeted based on what we knew at the time, so those, there's funds there that we would, um, consider needing to use for retiree health insurance, or health insurance, keeping it broad, because there could be other health insurance impacts. We may also need the board to consider, you have about eighty three thousand dollars in a health savings account. That may be something should our, our greatest worry occur in January for retiree health. Special education expenses, um, the, you know, again, things evolve in special education, um, you know, there's certainly an unexpected transportation piece that we may be looking at. So these are, you know, funds that would help support that. Curriculum during the budget process, about a hundred thousand was deferred for the fund balance, so that's like the AI training and things that they were talking about. In addition, um, requesting, um, why it's one forty seven and not about a hundred thousand, um, is we have an opportunity to do some significant reading training for some staff members, particularly in the area of special education, um, this is critical, um, critical training for them, and they are willing to take it on, it's hard training. Most of it will happen outside of contracted time, so, um, the additional fifty thousand pays for about thirteen people to get trained, um, and it's training that we will hope to move people to a level two, this would accomplish level one, um, for this year, and then hopefully we can build into level two into the next budget cycle. Homeless transportation, we have not been budgeting for this, we have really been absorbing it, we do have about five thousand dollars in a homeless expendable trust fund. Right now, we have about ninety thousand, but some of that will, that we have had to pay this year, some of that is we are waiting for, because sometimes it's shared between a district. But sixty thousand would provide us, um, an opportunity to have some funds next year. funds next year. You know, one of my hopes is next year we will be fully staffed and our contracted services will be fully met, you know, the reality is when you don't have those, you do have some, um, latitude within the budget to, to find a way to still not freeze anything, but still make up a ninety thousand dollars or so homeless transportation matter. Food service program, so this is for the program, this is not for unpaid balances, forty thousand dollars. Legal fees, uh, the board will be negotiating next year, so I think it's likely that they'll be needing for some increase to that. Furniture during the budget process, we reduced furnishings, um, to be considered during fund balance. This will be a group effort between our three principals and Mr. Swonker made it clear, no one is to buy a piece of furniture without Mr. Swonker's clearance, because he has a really good eye for it, um, but they, um, will have to decide how best to spend that twenty-five if the board supports it. Football helmet covers, we, uh, deferred this during the budget process, um, again, it adds an additional layer of protection. Uh, field experience, um, Diary Van Frank, um, so we are working with the Meredith Public Library, um, we had recently the Holocaust Survivor presentation in the fall, um, all seven through twelve will have a chance to go visit the Traveling Holocaust Museum at the library, um, the Colonial Theater Powerhouse Company, um, will be putting on the Diary Van Frank, and this would allow for a whole school opportunity to go see that production. Um, Athletics Hall of Fame, we had taken this out of the budget, um, I'd say this is a good community connector to recognize past achievements and Hall of Famers, um, and then ESO, uh, which is a research tool, or it gives you access to like research articles, it's, it's, um, a pretty robust, um, tool for the library that used to be funded through the state library and there's been changes to that funding, and so, um, we'd like to still be able to offer that. So those are our recommendations this evening and they are just that, our recommendations and certainly the board's decision.
Do we still have any funds in things like the buildings and ground expendable trust fund?
Yes.
Those are not included in these numbers.
Correct, so for expendable trusts, facilities has about six hundred twenty-one thousand, special education expendable trust has about three hundred thirty-two thousand, health reserve has about eighty-three thousand, uh, you do still have some money for multi-function school activity bus, forty-two thousand, playground, expendable trust is fifty-six dollars, uh, and transportation has five thousand, just about.
Great. Jim?
Uh, just a quick question on like, I'm just thinking about the facilities, the questions that came up at our budget meeting, the boilers that we just approved to take commercial loan outright, um, and we were asked at our budget meeting, why not take some of this money to pay down some of our loans? So we're looking at spending all of the money except eleven hundred dollars, like what, what's the facilities for five, sixty, whatever you're gonna be doing with that kind of money?
So, uh, twenty thousand is for well maintenance.
Okay.
Um, auditorium replacement curtains, sixty thousand, site work replacement, one hundred twenty-five thousand, so a lot of that is geared towards, um, over in the five, six wing of ILEs, making some improvements, um.
Okay, like that's like where they do our recess and stuff, yeah.
Yep, yep, so like, uh, repainting and, um, trying to really, that area has needed some attention.
Tetherball?
Yes.
Tetherball, yeah.
We have cleared that tetherball to come back. I love tetherball, they should be playing tetherball, so thank you for raising it. We've cleared it with projects, there's no reason we can't play tetherball. Janitorial services, custodial salary is one hundred seventy-five thousand, so if you recall during the budget, what we said is, you know, we're not hiring some of these positions, let's take it out and if there's fund balance, put it in, because we'll either need to hire or go with custodial services, we still need to clean. And we have been trying to, um, utilize, um, a cleaning service and, you know, that is helping. Um, purchase propane tanks and initial fill-up, so Mr. Swonker has done some more analysis in purchasing propane tanks to go with the HVAC pieces, um, right, the HVAC, or in, the boiler, sorry, boiler, um, and that's fifty thousand dollars. Um, sidewalks at the middle high school in the entrance, so the oil tanks are under the courtyard, or the oil tank is under the courtyard at the middle high, so that has to get dug up. That sidewalk has a lot of, like around the building towards the auditorium, is has a lot of tripping hazards, um, and.
It's the highest trip edge, Brian said it was the highest trip hazard of these trip edges.
Anything like changing in the courtyard after this?
Well, he's a little.
Or is it just like?
A little bit of a redesign, I would say.
Yeah, I think he's trying to make what improvements he can, I guess.
I just feel like sometimes like when you walk in, doesn't seem like the best like representation.
Yeah, I.
Like what you wanna see necessarily.
Mr. Swonker has a plan.
Okay.
Like, it may not go as far as you like, I think he's gonna do what he can to improve it, um.
And then tripping, getting rid of the tripping hazards.
The tripping hazards are.
Their big step forward.
We're really trying to connect those sidewalks all the way down to the original work that he did at the south entrance.
Yeah.
So flooring at Sandwich Central School, so the cafagymatorium, that floor is, um, you know, that is used like a gymnasium and it's not, it's about ten, it's not quite ten years old, but it just, it was a product that we could afford at the time and it's kind of where, where.
I played basketball in there, it should be replaced.
Um, flooring at the middle high school, so just twenty-five thousand dollars of additional flooring to continue to, you know, just, you know, stuff where it's out, trying to make those replacements. So that is what the facilities is looking for.
All right, that's the five hundred and sixty thousand.
That's five hundred and sixty thousand.
I feel like that's one we'll be asked about, you know, as we kind of move forward.
Yeah, Professor Duncan?
I, I just, I wanna state this a little bit, this was all part of our discussion in the budget process, that this was, this was something that could have been anticipated and this isn't sort of coming out of the blue. And, and I'm, I'm supportive of all these in part because this was part of our discussion as we tried to present as responsible budget as we could, knowing that there were really the potential for added costs by delaying some of these things and in particular the facility step. I mean, we have the money because we endured some pretty big hardship of not having all of the services we needed, um, I, I think this is a responsible thing to do because all of these things, if we defer them, are gonna get more expensive later. So, uh, you know, I think this is not surprising, it's responsible and I support it.
Thank you, Malcolm.
So I, I agree with everything Duncan just said, my, my question is, with six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in buildings and ground ETF, what is, is there an anticipated use of, of those funds?
So.
Because we have a gentleman here from the grandfather's club, when I talked to, left a message, I can talk to Charlie about it, however, there was, there's been a request, uh, from another member of the grandfather's club, him Meredith, a, you know, it, what is the possibility, what is the wisdom, what is the feasibility of using up to two hundred thousand of ETF to replace lights, which still leaves us with four hundred and twenty-one thousand.
And that's certainly a decision of the board, what I will share is that, at least, I think part of the, um, part of the thought process behind that expendable trust for many years has been saving to replace the turf field, which is what it was last used for, um, so, um, I don't have that number with me in terms of what that cost and how, how, I think the majority of that was funded through the ETF, um, at that time, so, um, you know, the reality is the turf field is already aging, um, and so that was, that, that's, you know, the money is there, it's an expendable trust for facilities, it's not just the turf field, um, there could be, uh, well fail, you know, or, uh, I shouldn't know, I don't wanna wish, there be, could be something catastrophic in the facilities, right, that we don't have funds to do, and so this is the place to do that.
Well, we are probably addressing our, our biggest potential liability with this boiler project.
Yes, agreed.
I would say.
Oh, I don't think so, right.
Emergency.
I would agree with that, you know, that's the kind of thing that would prevent us from having school.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I, I have to say, I, we, when the fundraising group for the lights and the field came to the board, we were very clear as a board, and I, and I would continue to feel that this is accurate, that we live in very, very challenging times on our budgets and our budgets do not support the board funding the lights project. And, um, I appreciate that the fundraising has hit a bit of a wall and I, I hope that that is, that is overcome, and I think the lights will be a, a, a great benefit to our community, to our school district, to our schools. I think there are more pressing matters in the budget and I think this board articulated that pretty clearly at the original thing, so I would not support using any of this money, the, um, fund balance to do the lights project.
Don't dispute, again, I'm, I'm advocating on.
No, no, and, and it's, it's a reasonable thing to.
So my question then becomes, should, should your disagreement be, be overcome? Should we spend X amount of dollars, uh, and, and bring these lights, which would, according to this constitution, then show potential donors, convert potential donors, future donors, oh, there is skin in the game, I'm going to, I'm going to give that money out.
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair question.
Right, so there's, there's, there's that, at what point, and we talked briefly about it, and the grandfather said, for grandparents or grandparents and parents, if we're really recalling it out, and said, hey, this, this offers the potential to become a revenue stream and to some extent pay for itself. And now we're talking about supporting the, the re-turfing when, when it comes time to do that.
I'm.
It's a much more, all I'm saying is it's much more complex than just.
I, I, I would, I think that, um, this is not something we have to take any action on tonight, certainly, cause if we were to do something without of the ETF, we can do it at any time, because it's there, um, I would think that they would wanna come and request it themselves and make their case, but to Duncan's point.
That's not what they said at the meeting.
Right.
Articulated, what they said was, this is a great opportunity and we'll raise the money for it. And I, at this point, I will, as one board member, I would hold them to that representation and that expendable trust, I think, is for things that are, that are needed or are an emergency and, and whether we use that expendable trust for this or not, I think is a, is a thing to be voted on.
I agree. Great, so but for now, we need to focus on what is proposed in front of us, if, uh, anybody wants to make a motion to approve this, if you support what, Ashley, you have something to add?
Can I just say one more thing, just a reminder, these amounts are up to amounts, I know Mrs. Moriarty already said that, but I just wanted to stress that, so these amounts could change, um, but these, again, are the maximum amounts, depending on our end of year.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I will move the question.
Okay, thank you. Second by Jim. Any other questions or comments on this proposal?
I would like to see the, the football helmet covers covered by the Booster Club, and I'm not sure that I, while I think the field experience is probably phenomenal, I'm not sure that, that this is, it seems like an unforecasted expense, and you said, oh, we got some money left over in the budget, so I said, hey, grab some of that. Likewise, I think there are more pressing matters to explain that moves ten thousand dollars on, uh, in the sense.
So procedurally, you're looking to amend the motion, basically, so to amend the motion, it would need to be seconded, and then we would vote on the amendment first, and if it either passed or failed, whatever that did, we would then vote on the motion.
And second the amendment.
So amend to remove that, put the money where though?
So the, the.
Just keep it or not spend it?
The, the motion would then change from, to approve the proposal of one point two one eight, three, three, five million.
Two one two zero.
Zero.
Right, thank you, just ten minutes. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing on all those.
Let's go to, just to jump back to the, this phase there and we don't spend that type thing, it would move down to, I believe.
On a sign.
On a sign.
Yeah, correct.
And it would become one ninety-one. So then what are we doing?
Which would go back to the tax.
That's a different question.
That's not gonna take that.
That's not on the table.
Just the amendment.
Which would go back to the tax.
Right, this is just the amendment. Would state the motion first. The mo- it's.
The amended?
The motion was the original proposal, but we're talking about just the amendment right now, which is to remove ten thousand dollars from that motion. And if that passed, we would then go back and vote on it without the ten thousand dollars. If it fails, we will vote on it as is. Does everybody get that?
Yep.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
So Jim and Ed, say aye. All those opposed? Aye, opposed.
Are we voting on the amendment?
Just the amendment.
So the money stays.
Yeah, that's what I will vote.
So now the, now the motion on the table.
I thought the motion was to do.
Is the original motion.
Now the motion is the one two one eight, three, three, five.
Correct, we're back to where we started. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I had one, five, one, because you did have same. Okay.
Did you get that, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna vote on the whole thing. All those in favor, say aye.
We, you know, aye.
This is the.
This is it.
The full thing.
The full thing.
We're back to the original. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Anyone want to stand up?
Shamar, did you will?
I didn't say anything yet, I missed, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
Okay, so let's, let's call that work in.
Okay.
Okay, so the vote is on, what the original motion, the one, one, one million, two hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars that was proposed.
Yep.
All those in favor of this proposal, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Already closed public comment?
No, this is, this is a vigorous meeting.
It's a long meeting, it's a lot to do.
I did ask for AI to be free. I did, I tried, Charlie.
I know, I, I have some thoughts on that, anyway. So, we're going on summer break, um, but as I said in the non-public session, we may have to call a meeting to handle a formal matter with the unit eventually, so be advised that there may be a last minute call to arms for us to have a meeting. And a lot of times what we've done this in the past is we try to have them in the mornings, as I recall, but this is a little bit different.
Yeah, um, well, it will also depend on availability of others.
Right, so stay tuned, in other words.
And we'll keep you posted.
Um, we have graduation this Saturday, um, if you're planning to, can we set up so that the school board members can park at, at the north entrance, just in the tub?
By the kitchen?
By the kitchen.
Yes, we can set that up, so you'll private park.
So do you folks know what I mean? Cause.
Yeah.
So.
Somebody communicate that.
I got chucked out last year.
Because last year I was, uh, badly told to.
I will talk with all, this is true.
I was thinking about that, so I wanted to bring it up.
I will work on that.
Yeah, and, uh, so it's, as you're heading down the hill, the top entrance.
Yep.
That they usually close off during bus times, you pull in there and that little parking area that goes around that end of the building, where the new boiler replacement project tanks are currently, right there, you can park right there.
I will make sure we send something up too, and I will make sure we connect with them.
And you can tell the police we've had this set up too, and they use it.
What time do you want us to do?
So it starts at ten o'clock, so, um, somewhere maybe nine forty-five, nine forty.
And if you're planning on going, it would be helpful for Mary if, if she knew, so she knew how many of us there were gonna be.
Definitely.
So, great, excellent, we'll be on the stage in the gymnasium. Yes, so we, we have the, the.
Where we used to have the, um.
We've only had it once there, um.
Where we used to have the district.
Yeah, but it's actually particular to that.
Just had a thought of a stage in that gymnasium.
No, it's a portable one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so.
Where we used to sit at the.
Yeah, where'd you get outside?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, um.
And do we know what's in it?
It is.
Forecasted seventy-five percent.
Forecasted, right, so we need to make a decision.
Single Saturday.
Yeah.
The meeting is mostly at nine forty, nine fifty.
That's market's law, guarantee.
We had to make a decision so we could be here.
I think that's prudent. All right, uh, do any board members have any other information to come for the meeting tonight?
You're drained.
Mrs. Dole, do you have any? Says Dole, do you have any other
I do not.
Parting thoughts?
Thank you.
Mr. Carrio. End of the season, your second consecutive season, we're gonna see you for a third.
You will.
Excellent.
I will be back next year.
And I'm sure the board here is running for school board.
And I think I speak to the entire board when we really enjoy your your thoughts and your response.
That's great, absolutely.
Mr. Parsons? Are you a junior now?
I'm a sophomore.
You're a sophomore now, so you're back next year, okay.
Two more years.
Sorry, I just wanted to think about replacement, because remember we we run into that.
Yeah.
So you might wanna recruit in the future, not next year though. Derek, do you have any final parting thoughts?
Thank you to everybody for a wonderful school year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much, we are adjourned. Karen, I'm just going to the shredder. He was seriously
I told, they called me seven minutes. I tried.
I know.
Oh, no. I will, I, she can coach.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm ending the call.
Okay.